Good evening, welcome. We're calling to order the planning board for Tuesday, July 26 at 7:07 PM. If we would all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one principle, liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first order of business is an approval not required. The purpose of this plan is to create new parcels A, B, and C from land shown on the plans Ward Street/South Meadow Village. Do we have somebody representing? Please. You're gonna have to speak directly into the mic for this.
I'm Joe Murray with South Meadow Village. I'm the president of the Board of Directors there, and I'm with...
Matt Rhodes from Edgewood Box.
All right. It's a little confusing, so if you wouldn't mind just explaining what's going on?
Sure. And Matt will talk more about the project that he's going through with transferring some of the land from not being farmland. But during the course of that project, which he can explain way better than I can, it was noted from one of the surveyors that there were a couple of parcels that over many, many, many years had kind of been used by South Meadow Village but encroached on Edgewood's property. So Matt actually approached me and said, "Would you be interested in helping to clear up the plan so that it's actually accurate in explaining the boundaries as to what it should be?" And we've been working on that for about two years now. He's been kind enough to transfer the property to us and clear all this up. So we had the surveyors develop the plan. And there's three small parcels that currently, and it appears as if it's been going back 40 years or something, 30 to 40 years. It's just nobody was aware of it because nobody did formal surveys, and then the formal surveys kind of yielded this situation. So we're really just trying to clean up so that we all know what we have and actually get it documented.
Are you representing South Meadow Village?
Yes.
Okay. And basically, it's for the purposes of transferring of land to South Meadow Village? And it appears that you're combining other lots in here? Is that...
We're not combining other lots, no. It's just those three parcels that will be no longer included in the Edgewood boundaries, and that'll be added to the existing South Meadow Village property.
All right, because I see interior lot lines listed in regards to maybe a small section to the west behind 15 Ward Street? Is that being brought in?
No, so Edgewood has several parcels in the large parcel. And when Reed Land Surveying did the work for us, they identified some encroachment areas on the South Meadow Village side of our property. So they marked those out because if we ever do a land transfer, that becomes an issue for the encroachment parcels. So their suggestion was, we'll mark them out, we'll denote them, and be recordable for each one of those. And my point was, well, I don't want anything for them. Let's just transfer them to, if it's South Meadow Village property, then put it back on that side and give us our property line, and let's just clear it up and be done with it. It's not something we're looking for encroachment sort of encumbrances for.
Sure, because maybe Tom can clear it up, because on your memo it says...
Yeah, on my memo, so if I may.
Yeah.
So the plan that's on the screen here shows parcels A, B, and C, and those are the three parcels that are the subject of the encroachment, as I understand. So when I looked at this plan initially and put the memo together, I noted that the original, what's on the assessor's map, shows 16, 8, and 1023 as these separate parcels.
Right, because that's kind of what I'm trying to...
So this is what's on the assessor's map right now. The plan that they put together doesn't show that Lot 8. So I assumed that this plan was going to erase that lot line between 16 and 8, as well as 1028 up here in the top corner. So those are internal lot lines that appear to be, and of course, the assessors may have, you know, inaccurate information of what those actual parcels are. But that plan that's on the screen conveys, carves out these very small parcels, A, B, and C, and then erases the internal lot lines from what I've seen.
So it is combining lots?
I can't actually tell you if Reed's plan was, I mean, our assessors still go by the lot lines that are there, and that's what we pay our taxes on.
Yeah.
It may have simplified it in terms of how the overall total piece looks, and that's why it was done. But to my knowledge, we'll continue to pay taxes on whatever lot lines are done through the assessors. We're not asking it.
Nope, I just wanted to clarify, because there was some confusion in regards to the original lot lines on this. But it wasn't your intention to be that? Your intention is to separate A, B, and C?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's it.
And all three of those are noted as non-buildable lots because they don't have frontage. Frontage is on the way for Ward Street. Ward Street's a public way, paved. And so the A and R is eligible for endorsement because it's on a public way. The parcels that are being conveyed are non-buildable, and that's the nature of the plan. So my note was a little inaccurate about just erasing the internal lot lines, because we didn't have a chance to chat about this beforehand. So with that, you've got, a plan's been prepared. I've got the other sheets on the plan as well, if you'd like, the board would like to scroll through those as well. But essentially, this cover sheet sort of conveys what's going on on the property. There are multiple sheets, each one with a signature block for the board to go through, and this is sheet two. Does a little better job of showing that parcel A here to be conveyed, as well as parcel B down here, and then we get to sheet three. Actually, it's a very long parcel. We get down to sheet four here, and this is where parcel C is at, at the bottom. So not creating any buildable lots, conveying these non-buildable parcels on a public way. So perfectly reasonable for the planning to endorse the plan, in my opinion.
Do we have any questions from the board?
Basically clears up my questions.
I couldn't...
Oh, sorry. That clears up my questions.
Okay. All right. The board will accept a motion to approve the A and R for the separations of parcels A, B, and C from... Their respective lots?
Yeah, from the, from map 15, Lot 16, and map 20, Lot 8B. The proposed motion, I had noted, was a move to endorse the A and R plan of Edgewood Boggs LLC, Ward Street, prepared by Reed Land Surveying dated June 15, 2022. And the planning board's endorsement is not a determination as to conformity zoning regulations, which is sort of a standard clause I remetro in for all the board's endorsements for A and R plans.
All right. So just to be clear, you will be combining three lots, and you will be separating three lots? Is that the intention here? Or is it just separating three lots? I just, because there was this confusion, so I need a clear statement in regards to it.
Are we combining parcel A, B, or C? Is that your question?
No, no. On the main lot, there's, it's comprised of three separate lots.
In South Meadow Village?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the main...
Okay. So this is the assessor's map that shows 16, 1020B, and 8. Those are the three lots that are on this plan right there. There's 10B, 8's down here, 16's at the top. So for the record, when they file this plan, those lot lines will go away in the assessors, and parcels A, B, and C, very small, non-buildable lots, will be recorded on the plan as well.
Okay. All right.
So, wait, did you just say that the internal lines would go away?
On this plan, they will. That plan's recorded, the other ones go away, yeah.
Right, because, well, that's why I was just asking for clarification, was, is that what you're asking for?
Right, that would change, that would change his tax structure.
It shouldn't change the tax, no.
He says, he just got to saying they pay their taxes based on the, based on the property lines, the way that their lot lines...
Well, they pay their taxes based on the acreage, and the acreage isn't, it might get a little smaller by losing A, B, and C, but the overall acreage, for all intents and purposes, is going to remain almost the same.
So I guess I'll make the motion by, to approve the creation of parcel A, B, and C as non-buildable lots.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion from the board? No. Mr. Dionne?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
It's not a special permit. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you. All right. If I can take just a moment with the board, you guys are fine. So we've got some signing to do, including some A and Rs from our last meeting.
Okay.
Michelle Brewer, our fabulous admin, whose birthday is today, and you don't have to do this because it's her birthday, suggested in the books that after you sign the A and R plan, if you pass it down, we'll have a little less signing to do at the end of the deed. So however that works for you. I thought it was a great plan.
And are we signing just everybody their own copy?
Yeah, but there's four pages of this one, so we'll get to it.
Okay.
We won't ruin Michelle's birthday. She's already left the building, I promise you. But we'll get them all signed up before we leave tonight, all right?
Thank you. Because I wasn't sure if it was...
If it was a one-seater, it'd be pretty easy.
Right.
There's four pages.
All right. Our next order of business is Limbia's Path off High Street. Discussion impossible vote. Do we have somebody representing the developer of Limbia's Path?
Hi, good evening. My name is Muriel and Williams.
You're gonna have to pull that a lot closer. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate that.
Good evening. My name is Muriel and Williams. I'm here with Karen Cash, who is the developer.
If you can't hear yourselves, then we can't hear you.
You couldn't hear me?
I can barely hear you.
Oh, it's because of that, okay.
Our recording secretary is at home.
Oh.
So it's very important that she hears what happens.
I understand.
So sometimes you gotta lean in a little more than you might.
Very good.
And yes, that's quite distracting.
My name is Muriel and Williams. I'm here with Karen Cash, who is the developer and principal of Asimbron Construction, the owner of the remaining land at Limbia's Path. And we're here for, Tom put us down for the final lot release, and also the completion of the subdivision.
Okay. I expect you have received a copy from Andrew Lyons of Fasen O'Neill in regards...
We did. Unfortunately, it came in later today, and we didn't really have the opportunity to go through it. But it was my understanding that most of the items met his approval, and he was suggesting a small bond be presented.
He was, yeah, he recommends a couple of small bonds, but he had a couple of concerns
that, and I'll just read them.
Listed below the items that should continue to be monitored or maintained until Lot 6 is stabilized. Straw wattles at the bottom of Limbia's Path Hill to protect the buyer retention basin from sedimentation shall be maintained until construction on Lot 6 is complete and the yard is stabilized. Inlet protection in Catch Basin 1 shall be maintained until construction on Lot 6 is complete and the yard is stabilized. Perimeter sediment controls consisting of straw wattles shall be installed on Lot 6 to mitigate sediment discharge onto sidewalk and roadway. Raise gate valve in front of Lot 3 to the finished grade. Fasen O'Neill has reviewed the as-built, prepared by Webby Engineering, and wanted to make note of some following minor items. There are some variations between the proposed and constructed storm drain rim elevation. They don't have concerns or comments on the as-built. There is some variation between the proposed and constructed pipe inverts, and again, they don't have concerns or comments. But they want you to provide rim elevations for the outlet structure. And this one is fairly important. It was previously believed that Drain Manhole Number 2 was located within the front yard of Lot 2, north of the driveway, adjacent to the residence's light posts. However, the as-built submitted to the town does not include Drain Manhole Cover Number 2, or Drain Manhole Number 2. Fasen O'Neill recommends that the planning board ask the developer if Drain Manhole Number 2 was installed and confirm that there is only one straight pipe run from the outlet control structure to the outfall behind Lot 2, as the as-built shows.
That we have a little bit of a problem with. Oh, the engineer just texted us. It is there, according to the engineer. I don't know why it's not on the plan. But he said that they had previously gone to the planning board, and they okayed us leaving it there and moving the easement, and that's the plan. There is an amended plan for that easement area.
Yes.
I can attest that there is a pipe there, because that's the purpose of the amended plan, because they discovered when they were building on Lot 2 that the pipe wasn't in the exact location as it was set forth on the original plans. So Steve Katuski from Webby Engineering drafted the amended plan that's been recorded.
And that shows the pipe where it's supposed to be?
It shows the amended spot. Because it was moved, it wasn't put in the exact spot, so he...
Which is okay.
Yeah.
On the plans, it should be as-built.
I would agree with you on that, yeah.
And if the manhole cover wasn't included, he's going to have to update that on the as-built plan also.
Understood, yes.
Let's see, there's potential, all right. So the drainage easement and open space access easements are recorded under Book 61, and I know formally, when you came through for the amendment, we made it very clear that those were to remain unobstructed and accessible because it's a public access.
Yes.
Okay. Lot 6 is still under construction. There's a potential for track-mounted construction equipment to damage the pavement, and there is the possibility of sediment to be discharged from the property during construction. Fasen O'Neill recommends that the town request a bond in the amount of $2,000 until Lot 6 is stabilized.
Correct.
And then there is one final caveat. Based on our observations at the site, the subject, and subject to the satisfactory completion of the items we just listed, we believe that the work has been completed according to the approved plans and special permit conditions. Fasen O'Neill believes that the items above are minor, but there is still some risk or damage to sedimentation of the right-of-way. If the town accepts Limbia's Pass, Fasen O'Neill recommends having a small bond established to cover repairs and cleaning if necessary, which would be outside of the other bond that we just mentioned.
Okay.
And that would be acceptable?
Has, he hasn't suggested what that would be?
I, if I...
Please.
So when I talked to Andy today, and after I talked to Andy, I called Karen, and we talked about the bond amount of $2,000 was the amount that he was talking about, total, flat out.
Okay.
So $2,000, one bond.
All right.
To deal with those minor cleanup issues.
And we'll update the as-built plans?
Yes, we will ask them to do that. And I just want to add that the reason why there's a foundation on Lot 6 currently is for the sole purpose of not doing any damage to the roadway. So that's why it was allowed for...
I do recall.
Yeah, so that was the only purpose of putting it there, so when they brought in the big concrete trucks and such, that they wouldn't do any further damage. So I don't think that they'd be bringing in too much heavy equipment that would jeopardize, you know, the area. But if they do, then they're responsible to fix it.
And we have two letters from the Board of Health and the Fire Department that seem satisfied with the project. Do you have any questions or concerns from the board? Now, what exactly are you asking for us from today? You're asking us to release Lot 6?
Lot 6, yes.
And in exchange, you'll take care of the issues that were mentioned in Fasen O'Neill's memo and...
Yes.
Provide a $2,000 bond?
Yes.
Okay. That's the as-built. On your as-built plan 2, it doesn't appear that you included the 20-foot-wide access and drainage easement. I know it's recorded in the deed, but it isn't recorded on the as-built plans.
Well, I didn't receive a copy of that as-built plan that Steve Katuski prepared. I think he just submitted it directly to Tom. But I will tell you that if it's recorded at the registry, it supersedes the as-built. But I could make a request.
Yes, but it is part of the project as a whole.
No, I would agree with that, and I will ask him also to include the manhole cover and do the easement, right.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board? The board will accept a motion to approve the release of Limbia's Path with the recommendations of Fasen O'Neill as discussed.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dionne. Do we have any discussion from the board?
So... There's the other plan, sorry, the other plans are being, the updated plans are, or corrected plans are the ones that are going to be filed?
They've already been filed at the Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
The plan that shows the easement area.
The easement and the manhole cover?
Well, the manhole cover isn't, that's usually not shown in a plan unless it's an original set of plans that gets recorded. But the, the plan that amended the easement, that shows the amended easement area and the right-of-way is already of record at the registry. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Dionne, if you would?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
All right, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that mine? Well, it's the town's. We'll make sure it gets to the town. Great.
Thank you.
That's the check for the bond amount.
All right. Next order of business is a minor modification, which is continued for Jellystone Park Cranberry Acres, 20 Shoestring Road. Modifications to Phase 2 campsite. The proponent has requested a continuance until 8/23/22. Correct?
Correct.
Yes, so we'll just move on. Public hearing, technically, do we have to open, continue, and close?
For the public hearing continues, we do not.
Just make a note, all right.
But in the case of Jellystone, just simply by acclamation is fine. But in the case of the public hearing, if the board would just make a move, a motion to continue that.
Okay.
The public hearing ones are a bit more...
Yes.
Formal.
Rigorous in our process than...
So a continued public hearing on the application of Make D, AD Make Peace Company Beals Thomas requesting a definitive subdivision approval pursuant to Carver's subdivision control law for property located off Wareham Street, Harwich Road subdivision in Carver, Mass, and a residential agricultural district. The applicant wishes to construct a 370 linear foot roadway and cul-de-sac to support a two-lot conventional subdivision. The proponent has requested a continuance until 8/9/22. And the board will accept a motion in regards to that.
So moved?
Oh, Mr. Gasky makes the motion to continue the public hearing to 8/9/22 at 7:00 PM. Seconded by Mr. Dionne. Any discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye?
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much. Another continued public hearing on the application of Bridgestone Development, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Section 3150, 32330 and 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Lot Number 3, Ricketts Pond Business Park, off Spring Street in Carver, Mass. In the Spring Street Innovation District, the project will consist of the construction of two commercial buildings located at Lot Number 3, Ricketts Pond Business Park, located off Spring Street. The lot will be comprised of two commercial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Stormwater from the site development will be directed to infiltration basins designed to accommodate the runoff from Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision. The proponent has requested a continuance until 8/9/22 at 7:00 PM, and the board will accept a motion in regards to that.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo to continue the public hearing of Bridgestone Development to 8/9/22 at 7:00 PM, as seconded by Mr. Dionne. Any discussion amongst the board?
Yeah, how much stuff do we have on 8/9 now?
I don't think we've continued much till...
I thought we had stuff from last meeting continued to 8/9 as well.
I think we had a couple, we had...
Yeah, unfortunately, I do not have the draft of the 8/9 agenda in front of me, but...
Okay.
So I don't have a, I can't give you a full count on what we've got going.
I thought there were two plus these, and then we had another one continued to 8/23, and then we have tonight another one continued to 8/23.
All right.
So, yeah, it's, and I agree, it's something that we should keep sight on and not overload the schedule such that we're here till all hours in the morning.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none? We are voting on approval to continue the application of Bridgestone Development's public hearing to 8/9/22 at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much. Finally, or... We have a public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July 26, 22 at 7:00 PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room Number 1, on the application of Christopher Mazaluski requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 5300 and 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 17 Wareham Street in Carver, Mass, to operate landscaping with tree services, home... to operate landscaping with tree services, home occupation in a residential agricultural district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Mr. Mazaluski? Am I s- I apologize if I'm not getting it right.
Nope, you got it.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing here?
Sure. Um, so I am speaking as the girlfriend. I'm the brains, he's the bronze here. So basically, it's a home occupation. No businesses conducted on property. Everything we do go to the customers' residences. We do believe that we are an essential service. Lots of homes, we remove trees that falling into homes, trees that are in danger of falling into homes, trees that need pruning. We do landscaping as needed, primarily tree service removal. But again, everything is conducted off property. On-site, we do have our trucks that are hidden from the road. The property does tuck back, as you can see by the plans, that nothing is pretty visible from the road. I will say the only thing we do have on-site is our personal firewood that we do log up on the right, which is where we were told that we could place such. And that is about it. Everything is pretty much off-site. And it's just me and him and run the shebang.
I see you have, uh, an area listed as an up- abandoned upland bog?
Yes, that is a curmy bog. We are planning to try and possibly redo that with the 61A this year. We're looking to re-sanding it and starting. That's what we're looking to do, but is not in use as of the moment.
Now... Has it been certified as an abandoned bog through the Conservation Commission?
So, the land just transferred over ownership to Mr. Mazaluski on the 31st. So prior it was. We can see that the bog had failed prior to then, so he's looking to re- uh, he has some friends that do cranberries that he's spoken to that says needs to be re-sanded over, re-hold-ons. It's gonna be a whole project we're looking into. But he does have about 8.8 of the 10 acres dedicated to the bogs, that there's not much else to do with it. So we are looking down that avenue.
All right. Um, has it been filled?
It has not.
All right. Um, I know resurrecting an abandoned bog is- is a very complicated process with a lot of red tape involved in it.
Yes.
Both federal, state, and local approvals. Are you planning on storing any materials on-site, any cut trees, stumps, mulch, fertilizer?
No, sir. The only thing on-site is our own personal firewood. So that's just a few logs that we do keep that are able to be used for firewood. It's gonna be the good dry wood, old wood. And that's just for personal firewood use. Everything else, lots of homeowners, usually we cut down and leave or we do dispose of. But nothing is on-site except for our trucks that come in at the end of the day empty.
All right. Um... Now, there'll be no use with the- allowed within the 200-foot riverfront?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Storage?
Yes, the part- the, um, the truck is parked right out in front, in front of the garage. Square footage of the home is primarily, the biggest part is the garage, which is what we operate out of. The trucks are parked right out front. Like I said, you cannot even see the- nothing of the logo, nothing of the business from the front, because they do tuck back into the left. And then every morning, they usually load up around 7:30. The guys pull out and they come back around between 5 and 6. And like I said, it's just Chris and his truck that comes and goes.
Now, I- I don't believe that there's any law restricting you from just parking trucks on the property. So that's kind of why we're- I'm curious myself about what- how you're approaching-
We're just starting the process. I'm- we're not too sure either. We got the letter, so we did the paperwork, and here we are.
Okay.
To be honest.
Now, who owns the property directly to the east of you?
I'm gonna let Chris take over here.
Sure. I'm sorry, it says Brian Archer on it.
Yes. I couldn't think of his last name. Brian and Colleen Archer.
Activity area. So, that, uh, it's gonna bring up this question because it says proposed permitted activity area. Is your abandoned upland bog? And I'm gonna ask, what exactly is it that you're requesting to be permitted in that area?
Nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there was a confusion on the application there. Really, we're just looking to keep our trucks on-site with our logo and head out like we do every day.
All right.
Cut the trees. And everything, like I said, is op- I mean, we go through your home and you called in, we've come to your house, cut your tree, and nothing is ever really done at 17 Wareham Street.
I also see augmented screening vegetation listed on here.
I'm not sure what that means. If you could clarify.
Uh, I- I'm just, I'm gonna guess that it's, all right. Up here by the riverfront?
Yes, sir.
That green, two double green lines there, it says augmented vegetation, uh, screening vegetation. Um, and I'm not sure where that falls in, in this application, or how that-
I'm not sure what you mean on there. I didn't put anything on the application for that. I'm not sure if that's just on the plans and you're seeing it. I just got our general plot plans from our engineer.
Oh, have you seen this plan yet?
I have. That's the one he said was his official plot plan. I don't know if he marked anything on there, so I do apologize. But we're not looking to do anything with the bogs, anything with anywhere, except for basically the driveway where you park the two trucks.
All right, so-
Other than that, the- basically the dogs run through the bog. That's about it.
All right. So, all you're looking for is to be able to park your trucks on-site?
Yep.
And to list it as your business address?
Yes, and we're looking to conduct business between 7 and 7:30 on-site, just loading up our vehicles. And essentially, that's him getting into the car with some orange juice in his paper. Um, and then they pull back in in between any time between 5 and 7, you know, as the hours do change through the season, of the daylight saving time. And then occasionally, we do place our wood for our own personal use, in that he does, you know, process for his own firewood as needed in the winter. And that, of course, is done on a weekday during the day.
All right, 'cause we're gonna, I mean, I don't know that this is gonna be permitted, but some of the things that would be- concerns to us would be, uh, appropriate screening, um, from the residences typically. A five-acre plot is required for landscaping because it's supposed to take place away from the residences. And, uh, that- that would- that would be a concern to the board. And I- I would think that, uh, it is likely that the board would require vegetative screening in regards to that, for- for both noise and light. But this is a public hearing. Do we have any questions from the board?
Yeah, I do.
Please.
I see, uh, the existing dwelling, I see a shed, I don't see a garage.
The garage is the dwelling. So basically, the dwelling is mainly the garage and mo- and a little bit of house.
I- I would think that we would have to have that inspected to make sure that it would be appropriate safety measures in regards to that.
I will say, everything's conducted outside the garage, though. The in-garage is just his personal storage.
Well, I mean, the part of the issue would be-
The trucks in there.
No, 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 they're outside. So it's just his personal storage. I was just saying the garage is the main part of the home.
Okay.
All right, so personal storage-
Yes.
So, are you putting fertilizer in there?
No, 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 it's gonna be like tools, like I was saying, like a chainsaw's in there, wrenches. He's got a couple different tool benches. He's got a side-by-side. It's just his garage. So every- really, the only thing in the business is the two trucks and the chainsaws, which are on the trucks. And they park, uh, he parks them parallel along his tree ridge right there, along his tree line, right behind the, um, Mr., uh, I can't remember his last name, Brian's property, but it's completely hidden because there's good forestry there. So like I said, every day they come in, he gets out of his truck, he goes in his home, next day goes back out to the trucks and goes out again.
'Cause in the application, it says all equipment stored indoors.
Well, so I wasn't sure, because the chainsaws and stuff like that, we do use in the garage. But that's just general storage.
All right. And what is it that you have for vehicles and equipment?
So, I'm gonna let you name the exact trucks. You know the exact sizes.
We have two chip trucks, a chipper, um, a utility trailer, which, a aerial lift, and a mini skid steer sit on top of. Um, I think that's- that's it. Okay.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, as far as the debris from your work sites, what do y'all?
None of that comes back. It all gets dumped off-site before we come back.
Okay.
We move it pretty well. So we either-
Yeah, that- that was-
Keep it, or we either already have it planned set up to go-
Yeah, that- that was my- that was one of the questions that I had, if- is if it came back, if you were gonna be breaking it down, if you were bringing it back to the house to break down and then dispose of, or- or whatnot.
The time or manpower to do so.
Yeah. All right.
Any questions?
That's my big question.
All right, this is a public hearing. Uh, is there anybody here that would like to speak? So, I- I'll have to ask you to excuse my- thank you very much for your time.
Hi, good evening.
If you- yeah, just give us your name and address.
Yeah, Bruce, uh, Bruce Benson. 9 Seeper Street, uh, 45-year resident. My property about 17 Wareham Street, separated by Crane Brook. Bayside Trees Company has, uh, for over three years, conducted on-site activities at the now-proposed area. These activities include dumping, stacking, handling, and reloading of logs for sale with online advertising. That bog is used as a turn-in basin for the trucks. It's a very large truck with, uh, a cherry picker and a, uh, a dump body, air brakes, backup beepers, et cetera. Trucks and log handling equipment and chipper's generate loud noises and disturbances occasionally early evening and weekends. And if you look at a, uh, Google Facebook search, a Bayside Tree LLC, it'll show a complete scope of their work as far as the materials and trucks, et cetera. Additionally, piles of wood chips have been, uh, spread on the abandoned bog, one pile lit on fire, left attended and extinguished by Carver Fire Department at the town's expense. This pers- uh, this proposed site is largely in the 200-foot riverfront zone of Crane Brook. And as of last Tuesday, according to the assessor's office, 9.5 acres of, uh, Chapter 61A leaves 1.38 acres. And they've never had any cranberry production of these bogs, to my knowledge, through my lifetime. Additionally, many high-intensity non-shaded alu- shaded lights illuminate the site from dusk to dawn. These lights blanket the dark sky, invade my property and my home, and I question where is the goodwill? I've been harassed and intimidated. Um, I have police reports, I have photos. I hope the board will consider my concerns, limit commercial business to, uh, property-zoned districts, protect the Crane Brook watershed, neighbors' tranquility, and property values of the residents. I have photos. And, uh, anything else related to it, could I give it to you?
Absolutely.
Great.
Please.
Can I leave now?
Any questions?
No, thank you for your time, though.
Appreciate it. This is what I consider one of the points I'm trying to keep for you guys.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Luda Adams. I'm living in 28 Wareham Street. Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much.
So, uh, Luda Adams, I am living 28 Wareham Street. It's crossroad from 17 Wareham Street. I usually spend a lot of time outside, in the morning and evening, with my dog. I don't hear any noises too much, so I can't complain. So... It's everything quiet from our side. Yeah, I see the trucks coming in, get back, but nothing like crazy. So...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are you close to Mr. Benson's property that just spoke?
Put him this way, I can see his driveway. Um, then how- how far are we?
He's on the one-way street. You know, we're right across from the driveway of Mr. Mazaluski here. So we can look right down the driveway to where the committee-
Yeah, basically, I see like, if I- outside with my dog, I will see like, I don't know, his trucks coming in, coming out, so-
What about the lights that he was talking about? Just any lights?
Just regular lights. It's like, you know, to be honest with you, when I'm on my house, on the second floor, right? I can see the lights on the Wareham Street when come like, um, you know, they have a campsite. So I can even, I can see the, uh, lights from over there. And also on Wareham Street, it's actually 25 miles road, right? But sometimes car, motorcycles flying. And I think personally, a lot of noise from motorcycles or some cars, like, you know, they try to burn the engine, like sport cars, especially at night. So I'm like, wow. And that noise, I can hear it very easily, and sometimes I even jump. But I never hear, again, e- even it's in the morning and it's so quiet around, I'm with my dog. Yeah, I did see his truck pull out. You can hear the truck coming out, but not like, like something like, you will be-
Are you familiar with the fire Mr. Benson was referring to? That there was a fire on the bog, or it's burning something on the bog?
No. No, I didn't see it. I usually kind of see a lot of stuff because I'm working from home and I'm very often like, yes, I always go check my chickens, see around, with the dog. I, no, I- I didn't see, I cannot speak up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we'll want to continue, uh-
Can I say one more thing really quickly?
Oh, please. Yeah, sure, absolutely.
I do just wanna-
You have to re-identify yourself.
No, I- okay, I am Ashley Adams. Uh, I'm the girlfriend of Mr. Mazaluski. I do just wanna say, I didn't initially come into helping him when the whole animosity did start with his neighbor, but I do wanna say there is a lot of hearsay. I do know that him and the na- I'm not saying that what he did not say is not true. I do not know. What I'm just saying is I do know that there is animosity between the two, and there is hearsay with some not very much getting along. So that was our worry coming into this meeting, that I never would bring animosity into stuff that was not true, if that does make sense. So we do conduct as professional as we can, and we can't keep everybody happy, but we sure do want to. So I'm not sure how we can remedy his issues, but we would sure love to. And like I said, we do offer an essential service, and that's all we want to continue to do. So I did just wanna come up and just- just clear the animosity, because sometimes, you know, neighbors do like to get along, but sometimes they all don't. So... And, oh, he's back.
I just wanted to add too, that if you talk to Conservation Committee, a lot of Mr. Benson's complaints were proven false through Conservation doing a walkthrough and investigating.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
So we, um, we need to set up a s- Uh, please, it's an, yep, public hearing.
Okay, my name is, uh, Daniel Adams. I live across the street at 28. I, um, I know the light he's talking about. It's on the top of the telephone pole. You go down his driveway at the end. Tell you the truth, I kinda like it because when the power's out in town, we're on two different grids. And I can tell if, um, if his power's on and mine's out, so I know the light, it's- but it's at the top of the telephone pole. It's been there for as long as I lived there, so I think that's the light he's talking about. And I gotta say, I never, ever heard him with the chipper going, 'cause I know it's loud. But just his trucks coming and going is all we ever hear. But I can't, I- I know we- he- we would hear that chipper if he was chipping. So, that's- that's about all I- I can testify to.
No, thank you for your time today.
Yep.
All right. Um... We have to set up a site walk, uh, so motion to, um, continue the public hearing. Tom, is there a- a date that- that might be?
Well, the, uh, let me say two things, is that you had some concerns about the 8/9 date.
Yes.
And this is, uh, an ongoing operation, so there's nothing particularly critical that's going to affect the applicant if it takes a little longer to resolve this. So if the board wants to consider, uh, rolling it back to, uh, continuing it to the meeting of the 23rd, that doesn't appear to be problematic for, uh, the applicant or- or for the board. We're not creating anything new on the site. It doesn't require a technical review. Just a matter of complying with those and perhaps the board creating some conditions for, uh, the special permit. So with that, I would suggest continuing till 8/23 and then looking at a date that's mutually advantageous for the board to do a site visit, 'cause I assumed you wanted to do a site visit to the site.
I- I do. So, um, the board will accept a motion to continue the public hearing till 8/23 at 7:00 PM.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. All right, discussion. Um, site- Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Ms. Sordillo, alright, discussion, site walk next Monday at noon? Yes, they, they will be passed around, yeah, but actually, the copies will probably, will be provided to the board to, to look at, because, you know, as we're in the middle of the meeting, it would be, and it's continued, so we, we give ourselves some time to do that. Next Monday at noontime?
You're talking about eight, three?
I'm gonna say yes.
Monday is August first.
August first, oh, August first.
Would that be acceptable, Mr. Williams?
Pretty much.
Ms. Sordillo? At noon on Monday?
Okay.
Mr. Dion?
Probably be, probably be okay?
I don't, I don't know what my schedule's gonna be next. Okay, alright. Alright, Tom, if that's okay with you, then Monday at noontime?
We'll, we'll set it up, we'll let you know that.
Are we allowed to have a copy of the photos that were submitted? We would love to, I mean, we just wanna remedy whatever, we love, we wanna get along with our neighbors.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll, I'll make copy, I'll make copies of the things that were in there, and you can come by the office and pick them up.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Everything submitted is public record.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, the motion is to continue to eight, twenty-three, the public hearing till seven P.M.
And then the walkthrough, will we be notified?
Oh, that's why, that's why we're, that's why I started right now, so is Monday, August first at noon fine for you guys?
Yeah.
To have the board come out and take a look at the site.
August first, twelve, perfect.
Excellent. And the motion is to continue the public hearing till August twenty-third, seven P.M.
I'll make said motion.
I, I believe, the motion's already been made and seconded.
John Gatsky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
We appreciate y'all's time, thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll see you next Monday. Alright, topic's not reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours in advance, we don't currently have anything on, on the list. I, myself, don't have any particular notes, so.
Well, I, I do wanna mention, and Rich just gave me the heads up, is that because Kevin is not here, and we don't have the Mullen Rule, this is a special permit, it requires a four-fifth vote.
Yes.
So it is likely, when we get to that point, that you will be anointing Don.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, to be a voting member.
Yes.
So, we'll get you up to speed, and as exciting as it's been, all the meetings before, you, you, you've, you're gonna be on the record at some point in the near future with the vote.
Right, and he's as up-to-date as all of us, so.
You're gonna be putting in at centerfield, man.
So the only other announcement I had, as, as I mentioned earlier today, it is Michelle's birthday, we had a lovely time today, she got to work late on her birthday, she got to get ready for the planning board, and she got to see me, so I hope she has a better night than her days been.
I heard you saying happy birthday to her.
Well, we do that.
Okay, and she recorded?
No, she didn't.
So, no. She's invaluable, I, thank, yes, so happy birthday, Michelle, thank you very much for all the exceptional work you do, it's, it's, it's very valued among the planning board.
That's definitely.
Happy birthday.
As, as you know well by now, you can get along without a planner, but you can't get along without an admin.
That's not true.
Absolutely.
That's a true story.
That's true, yep, yep.
Alright, I haven't had a chance to go over the minutes of six, twenty, eight, twenty-two, so if it's alright with the board, we can continue that to our next meeting.
More for me.
Okay, alright, so.
We have a number of things for the board to sign before they leave.
The, the chair will accept the motion for adjournment.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
Made by Ms. Sordillo, seconded by Mr. Dion, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gatsky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Oh, Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Area Fifty-Eight.